I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phyllis, if we could have a roll call, please.
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Here.
And Wiley Cirque.
Wiley Cirque is not here, but he is en route. He had a college course and said he would be running close, so I need to make a notation that Wiley should be showing up any minute. Any minute. Okay. First thing, I need to make a matter of record, the affidavit of mailing of public hearing notice for the REV recreation group.
Sorry, we got any minutes?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Matt. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our July 2nd meeting. Did you have a motion or a...
Motion, accept them as emailed.
Second, a motion and a second, accept the minutes from our July 2nd meeting as emailed. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, Phyllis, did you find what you're looking for there?
Yeah. And then which helps make this matter of record that the public hearing was publicized.
And the public hearing for this evening was also publicized. Need to make both of these a matter of record, if we could, please.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to make the affidavit and the advertisement of the public hearing a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Wiley has entered the building. Wiley is here. Okay. Next thing, I need to request that someone make a motion that we close, temporarily close the city council meeting. Suspend the city council meeting and open a public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion to suspend the city council meeting and open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We are now in a public hearing. This public hearing is in reference to granting a tax abatement for the REV recreation group. Larry Macklin and Doug Harmon is here this evening. Doug was REV. And any comments from either of you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representing Adams County Economic Development Corporation, I rise and would like to rise in this public hearing in support of Resolution 2019-4. If you all disagree, your comments later.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. Any other public comments from the public or from council members? Seeing none, I guess we could move to close the public hearing and re-enter the city council meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and reopen the city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
When we reopen the city council meeting, can we do another roll call? Because I believe Councilman Cirque is now in presence.
Do we need to do that, Phyllis, or is it just being noted? She's noted.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next thing we have would be a confirmatory resolution for the tax abatement for the REV recreation group. And as Larry said, I believe that's Resolution 2019-4. Before that's introduced, Larry, you have some comments?
Again, Mayor Meyer, members of the council, City Clerk Mrs. Whitright. As the Adams County Economic Development Director, as I'm all interim director, I come to you tonight to ask you to consider and adopt Resolution 2019-4, which is confirming the REV recreation group application we brought to you on July the 2nd to establish an economic revitalization area, referred too often as an ERA, thus creating the abatement opportunities for their proposed investment. The successful completion of this project and investment over a five-year period and bringing jobs to this community would be enormous, as I've noted before, 300 new jobs with a substantial payroll and 19.5 million investment in machinery, equipment, new building, and major rehabilitation of other real estate improvements. Again, you can refer to your SB 1s to see that. As you know, part of the process we go through in economic development is to negotiate and facilitate incentives and reasons for a business to expand or locate here and provide investment in jobs. The proposed investment would be all new to us, eventually all to be added to our tax base. Folks, I noted two weeks ago when you declared the economic revitalization area, and again, the company is grateful for that action. I noted that we need to open our arms and embrace this project for Decatur and Adams County. It was not only, or is not only, a competitive project, but also one of the largest to morph east Indiana in recent months. What we have before you tonight is our request to legally finalize the property tax abatement, the incentive, for the proposed new investment in assets and jobs, jobs created to provide a payroll for our families. That is, we are asking you to complete the process by allowing a phase-in over a 10-year period of new taxes that this investment would bring over and above the property that is currently assessed. We're asking you to adopt confirming Resolution 2019-4 that I believe you have before you. Again, with me tonight is Doug Harmon, representing the REV group. Thank you very much.
Okay. Your council members just a minute to look at the confirming resolution. If not, I would look for a motion to introduce confirming Resolution 2019-4 by short title only.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2019-4 by short title only.
I have a motion and a second to introduce confirming Resolution number 2019-4 by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Confirming Resolution Number 2019-4 of Common Council of City Decatur, Indiana, Resolution Confirming the Establishment of an Economic Revitalization Area, Confirming the Grant of Tax Abatements to REV Recreation Group Inc. for Redevelopment or Rehabilitation of Property and for the Installation of New Manufacturing Equipment and Waiving Noncompliance ipending with Certain Statutory Requirements.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2019-4.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of confirming Resolution 2019-4. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2019-4 has been adopted. The next thing in the chain of...
We'll just sign these.
We'll move.
We'll get an official one over here.
Okay.
We'll get three of them signed.
Yeah.
I got one if you want me to sign.
Yeah, that's fine. Phyllis? That's fine. Okay. The next thing in the...
More sign, Larry. What do you need more than?
More than three or...
Sign copies?
Yeah. About two.
How many?
Yeah. Three.
Four total?
Three total.
One for Phyllis, one for me, two for Larry.
Four. Got it. This is like golf.
Next will be the presentation, excuse me, of, well, I guess that's it, right? Confirming the Resolution to the Tax Abatement. So that is it. We're there, right? This is it. We've signed papers and move on.
Yeah, because they'll have kind of... We'll follow up. We'll see what's going on for the county.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks again to REV. Okay, next thing on the agenda then is an ordinance for the creation of the Public Arts Commission, which we began two weeks ago. And we're ready for third and final on this. Is that am I right?
Mm-hmm.
And that was...
I can find it.
Ordinance number, which... Out.
Seven.
Did we do first two readings on it?
No.
We did not? Okay.
I think can make some changes. It was working on...
Right. We made some, there were some minor changes that you asked to be made, so I made those.
Okay, and it's 2019, what?
Seven.
Dash seven. Before we begin, is this, do we want to do all three this evening? Is there any reason why we should table it or...
Did we get people from each one of the...
I don't have the people, but we've talked to all the entities and I think they're all fine. Yes.
They would all like to be involved?
Good.
Okay, I'll just go over the changes real quickly. The appointments, six are made by, one each, by North Adams Art Council, Sculpture Culture Connection, Hark and Rec, Redevelopment Commission, Decatur Main Street. One represented by Common Council at seven, and then those seven appoint two more. And then what I did is the terms of the office, because you said you wanted it to be four-year calendar terms, but you also wanted them staggered. So here's what I did. Because I don't know when the initial appointment will be made, we don't want to necessarily wait until January 1. So what I said is that the initial members appointed to the commission shall run from the date of appointment through December 31, 2023, or until successors appointed confirm, whichever is later. Okay? Provided, however, the members appointed by Decatur Main Street, Common Council, and the commission members, which are four, shall run from the date of appointment through December 31, 2021, or until successors appointed confirm, whichever is later, in order to achieve staggered terms.
There you go.
All subsequent appointments will be for four calendar years thereafter. Okay? So that first appointment could be longer than four years, or six out of the, or five out of the nine. Okay? And then I added, in the event an organization identified in paragraph A no longer exists, so that would be the six who have an appointment, the six bodies. If one of them no longer exists, or fails to make the required appointment within 90 days of the commencement of a new term, the member appointment of that entity will then be appointed by the Common Council. Okay? So that addresses staggering it. They serve until their appointment is made, but if they're not, if that doesn't happen within 90 days, then Common Council's going to make the appointment. Okay? And then we left in the language about that the chair would be from the members of the commission. You still can have non-voting members as members of the commission. The chair would serve for two years as chairman and could serve a second consecutive term, but they can't serve more than two terms in a row.
Okay. Those are the changes?
No. That was it. That was it.
What about residency?
We took out that.
We took it out.
Took it entirely out.
I just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I did take that out.
Yeah. We just removed that.
Yep. There was a clause in there about having to reside, and I just took that out entirely.
Okay.
Good point. And once passed, how will council want to determine who their opponent will be?
Well, I think each of these bodies needs to make an appointment fairly soon so that the body can get organized, because under the terms of the ordinance, the commission is to meet quarterly, and then the commission is likewise to adopt its own rules and bylaws. So they can't do that until there's enough members to have a quorum to do so. So I, that's why I worded it the way I did, because I didn't know when each of the bodies were going to make their appointment.
I guess, I would suggest, from the council's side of things, maybe as you wait and see how the other entities, who they appoint, maybe just keep your ears open.
Overlap.
Yeah. Keep your ears open and then...
And it was, I think we had talked about, instead of council just actually selecting one, we accept nominations from the board?
You can...
Or just don't select that?
Yeah, that's, I mean, we can just ask that.
We can ask for that.
We can ask for that.
We don't have to have it in an ordinance. Okay, cool.
All right. Any other comments or questions about the Arts Commission?
Sounds good.
You good to go with all three?
Well, in the budget, do we need to ask anything, or when we, when they come up with a budget that we need to fund?
What happens is, because it's an appointed body, the budget has to come to you as the fiscal body for approval.
Okay.
Okay? So they're not going to have a lot of money to work with initially unless council funds it. The funding sources for the budget can come from different sources. It can come from donations, it can come from light item amounts that are appropriated by council, can come from grants, program or admission fees. So those are the sources of funds. All of those funds would go into a cumulative non-reverting fund. So at the end of the year, those funds roll over for the benefit of the Public Art Commission use. The use of the funds still has to be based upon the standard processes and policies that govern cities, the cities' budgeting and expenditure. So, you know, claims should still be approved, that sort of thing.
By council?
Yeah.
May I ask another question? Can they use the city as their, for the grants to where to land the money? Do we just set up a special account, or do we have to form a 501(c)(3)?
No, you don't have to form a 501. Most of these organizations are all 501(c)(3) entities anyway, so one of them could be the grant applicant.
All right.
And then they could turn around and donate the funds to their commission.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, my one question is, is should council be thinking about maybe putting some funding to this commission for next year?
Well, the Redevelopment Commission, when they got, when they began, you know, they didn't have any money either. And isn't that what we did then? Didn't we, like, lend them some money?
Yeah, the Rede, if you can, at that time, the Redevelopment Commission, you had to loan the money, and then the commission had to pay it back within a certain period of time.
My thinking, though, too, is that this would become a budget line item.
Light item in your own budget.
In our own budget. And instead of the money that we've been just individually granting that...
We give it collectively, and they give you that.
That's right. Yeah. And so we would, which would require some discussion, decide what do we think is an appropriate amount, particularly to start, and then, you know, as we move on, where, you know, where do we see it going? So you're right, Tyler, that does, will require some discussion and...
That's cheap in the budget.
Yeah. That's what I was going to talk about. And gets that much of a presentation.
Let's pass, let's...
To talk about all that.
Let's pass the ordinance, and then after we pass the ordinance, let's continue this discussion about possibly putting some seed money into their, into their coffers.
So, well, I will make a motion to place ordinance 2019-7 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-7 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-7, short title, notice to the Common Council of City Decatur, Indiana, which amends Chapter 32 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015, as supplemented by adding sections which establish a public art commission, which establishes the goals of a public art program, and which establishes cumulative non-reverting public art fund.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-7 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-7 on its first reading. We would have a roll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Cirque. Yes. Make a motion to place ordinance 2019-7 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-7 in its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-7, short title, notice to the Common Council of City Decatur, Indiana, which amends Chapter 32 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015, as supplemented by adding sections which establish a public art commission, which establishes the goals of a public art program, and which establishes a cumulative non-reverting public art fund.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-7 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-7 on its second reading. We'd have a roll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Cirque.
Yes. Make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2019-7 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2019-7 for its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-7, short title, notice to the Common Council of City Decatur, Indiana, which amends Chapter 32 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015, as supplemented by adding sections which establish a public art commission, which establishes the goals of a public art program, and which establishes a cumulative non-reverting public art fund.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-7 on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2019-7 on its third and final reading. We'd have a roll call vote.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Cirque.
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance 2019-7 has been adopted. Okay, thank you. Next, Ann, if you want to come on up, I'll introduce Ann Razzo, representing the Greater Decatur Advisory Committee. We met a couple of weeks ago, had a really good meeting, I thought, and it was to discuss about our five-year capital improvement strategic investment plan, which is something that Greater Decatur came to us with about five years ago right now. And we followed, and look at all the great things we've done over the last five years. And with that, Ann, go ahead and explain what Greater Decatur came up with.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Meyer. Thank you, city council. I appreciate your time this evening. As Mayor Meyer mentioned, Greater Decatur Strategic Advisory Committee was formed in approximately 2012, 2013, and we were tasked with answering some tough questions. How do we attract talent to our community? How do we retain talent? What kind of quality of life initiative do we need to employ? And how do we make that happen? And it took us a good year before we really kind of figured out and narrowed it, narrowed down some of the questions, and we came up with essentially our mission statement. And this was presented, actually, to city councils back in 2015. But this was the framework from which we began to build and prioritize capital investment projects that have been recommended to the city council. And with that, in order to develop a family-oriented community full of opportunity and pride, we must attract, retain, and engage citizens through enhanced quality of life and economic prosperity. Quality of life and economic prosperity are complementary outcomes, equally dependent on and advancing one another. To this end, we must focus our efforts on revitalizing our community's appearance and recreational opportunities, encouraging personal skills and knowledge advancement, promoting the growth and development of new and existing businesses, and effectively market our strengths to our citizens and to those and surrounding communities. These efforts naturally support and enhance one another. So it's kind of a mouthful, and it's a lot to take on. And over the past five years, the city of Decatur and city council have done a phenomenal job in working towards achieving many of the goals that have been set out in the capital improvement projects that were initially identified. So back in 2015, a list that looked like this, with lots of ones and twos and threes, were presented, and a request was made to contribute $500,000 per year for a total of five years, and a total $2.5 million investment from the city into capital improvement plan for facilitating projects that fit within this mission statement. And to date, we have shown a great deal of success. We have the downtown facade program, which is running strong and has given our downtown community an incredible face lift. We've completed some of the Monroe Street street gates. The Second Street street gates are being initiated this year. Madison Street Plaza is completed. Downtown Nature Preserve is completed and is a wonderful enhancement to our community. Second Street lots are in progress, and housing is ready to be filled in the next month or two. We have the Art and Cultural Center and Entrepreneurial Center, which is in progress and set to be completed next year. We had earmarked for a marketing campaign. We have the Hannah Nutman Park renovation project, which is underway. The Penzi Zee Pond is completed. Five Points Intersection Improvement, which is in progress and set to be completed in 2022. Riverside Park Development, the study was completed in 2018. There have been significant property acquisitions and infrastructure improvements along First Street, along with sidewalk enhancements along there as well. So that is a long litany of successes, and with those in mind, my, I've come to you at the request of Mayor Meyer to ask city council to again commit a minimum of $500,000 a year over the next five years to facilitate and continue the capital improvements that have been made to our community. And in early July, Greater Decatur met, and we helped, and we held a meeting to identify and discuss and help prioritize the next round of projects that we would recommend the city look at in pursuing for completion. Those projects include continuing the downtown facade program or renewing the commitment to that at about $50,000 a year for participants. Complete the Hannah Nutman Park renovation. Complete the Second Street, the Second Street street gate, that one gets me every time. Develop and adopt a community marketing plan. Riverside Park development, which would include the reuse of marked Canadian air buildings, and consider incorporating areas of additional commerce along First Street. Sidewalk improvements, especially throughout the entire city, to support a safe route to school, especially with the reduction in busing services and the increased need for students to walk to areas of school. Currently, there is a 13th Street corridor study that is underway, and we would recommend that, we've seen the success with downtown revitalization efforts, and we would suggest that the city look at supporting the results of the 13th Street corridor study and hoping to facilitate implementation of those recommendations. Support the results of the Park Department's pending five-year plan, and those would include an aquatic park and splash pad, a dog park, and continued expansion of the trail network. And we would support the use of Northwest Pool for business incubation and potential use for even something like a commercial kitchen. There's been some buzz and interest in actual rental space from upstart cooks and bakers who lack commercial-grade workspace and who would be willing to rent.
There was actually someone right on the Decatur, Greater Decatur Committee who needs something like this.
Who needs it, yes. But she had heard from several other individuals and made that, made that recommendation. So, again, this is another long list. It looks like a daunting task, and will $2.5 million over five years likely cover it? Probably not. But it's a great start. And I look at where we came from in 2012 and 2013, and what we have been able to accomplish within this community during that time. And I, I wholeheartedly believe in the leadership and the individuals involved in making, making these improvements and enhancements possible and happen. So I very much appreciate your time tonight, and I would recommend at this time that the city adopt or renew its commitment for a budgetary pledge of a total of, minimum of $2.5 million over a five-year period of time, with a minimum of $500,000 per year allocated. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. And when you say $2.5 million over five years, I know the last five years, there were a couple of years where we didn't do $500,000.
Mm-hmm.
And we carried that over so that the next year or year after, maybe we did $700,000. So that would, that would hold true with this, whereas it could be up to $500,000 a year, but it may, or if it's not 500, what's not used could be carried over so that ultimately we still have the total of $2.5 million.
It would be similar to the funds allocated to the arts commission, where it would be a cumulative rollover kind of format, where that would still stay earmarked and maintained for a cap of home. for capital improvement project.
Exactly. Yep. So, no, again, the meeting we had, the last Greater Decatur meeting we had was excellent. Cam Keier led the meeting. There was a lot of good input from everyone at the meeting, and you see in all the different things that they've suggested, and a lot of good suggestions, and it was my recommendation that we have someone from Greater Decatur come tonight to present this to the council. And I open the floor now for any discussion that anyone might have. Quick story. This past weekend, I had a customer of mine in town from Atlanta. She hadn't been in town for three years, and she is thrilled at what she sees happening in Decatur, and she's proud. Now, this is still her home, even though she doesn't live here, but she sees this momentum. She sees things going on. She's excited about the loss project. She loves seeing Hannah Nutman redone. She sees momentum, and I think we owe it to ourselves to recommit to that momentum that is going forward. The success of the plaza thus far has been amazing, and it's just a great venue, and so I think it's only going to get better. Now, we need to work on First Street to enhance the whole experience of Madison Street Riverfront experience, so it's all good. Any other comments over here, guys? Any? Okay, are you looking for a motion from council to get this into the budget?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I will make that motion.
It'll be a follow-up with a resolution. We did that when we did this previously, so I'll prepare a resolution to that effect, but for Phyllis's sake, she needs to have that in here now, so.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Thank you, council. I appreciate it. I think we're all on the same team when it comes to this, so with that in mind, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and thank you, Ann.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to the committee for continuing.
There was a motion.
It was a motion and a second.
I have a copy.
Yeah, why don't you give everyone a copy if you have one? Now, that's not to say that there are other things we can do too, you know? It's just, yeah, and it's not to say that every one of these have to be addressed, you know?
Anyone for the press?
And that's. Ann, I got an extra opinion. It's a ordinance, a resolution. It's to be a resolution. So, they get that. That's nice. Okay, next up on the agenda is just something I need to make a matter of record, and that is a note I received from Greg today. It says, "Mayor Meyer, please consider this my request to not be reappointed to the Decatur Board of Zoning Appeals when my current term expires on December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with the City of Decatur, professional staff, and dedicated community volunteers for the past nineteen years since I accepted the initial appointment from Mayor Fred Ish in December of two thousand. My best to all, signed Greg Kitson." And I need to make this a matter of record, but at the same time, extend my sincere thanks to Greg Kitson, who has been a huge asset, not only to the BZA but also to the Plan Commission. He resigned from the Plan Commission at the end of last year, and we've replaced him, and now regretfully, I think Greg's to that point in his life where he's ready to start spending more time with family and whatever, and don't fault him for this, but I am very indebted to all that he has done. We had a BZA meeting this evening, and he does a fantastic job running a meeting, so. Anything you can say about Greg?
And he's also been tremendously involved with Greater Decatur.
Yep.
I was going to say, has he been signing?
No, he is not. No, he is not. We won't let him.
Yeah, years to come, Greg's fingerprints will be on a lot of improvements that were made in Decatur.
Yep. So, if I could, make this a matter of record? I'd like to make it a matter of record. We'll take Matt's second on that. It's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Phyllis, you need this? You can have that, my copy if you want. That's all I have on the actual agenda on my report. I just want to say thank you to our community for the great turnout we had at the groundbreaking a week ago yesterday at Hannah Nutman. I'm not sure how many people were there, but I think we could actually count them. We have some really cool photos that were done by Macquinn Aerial Photography. And Don, you going to bring those up or what?
Working on it.
You're working on it? All right. Great turnout, great turnout of individuals and businesses that represented the project. Don's going to try to bring up some, not those, the ones from the aerial. Do you have those?
Don't have those.
Okay, I didn't send those to you. I'm sorry.
I have.
You have some photos, though. Yeah, it was great. And we reported that evening that at that time, we had about seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars committed, pledged, and with the patronicity campaign that's going on, which is coming down to where we're almost there. I mean, we're within hundreds of dollars now of passing the fifty-thousand-dollar mark on patronicity. That will then get doubled, so with patronicity funds, it'll take us up to a little over eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. And again, I just challenge the community to keep donating. You know, the goal was a million. We don't have to have it, but the goal, I would love to exceed a million dollars. So, again, I urge community residents, if you haven't donated, please consider donating to the project. Don and I drove out there today, and Don explained to me what a lot of the different things going on, the different, the water lines, the sewer lines, the storm sewers. We also traveled around town, and we went out to the new water treatment plant. Construction's going well out there so far. We talked to the job superintendent. They're hoping for dry weather for the next few weeks. If they get, the next few weeks taken care of with predominantly dry weather, they said they'll be looking really great, and the same thing holds true out of here at Hannah Nutman with Fleming. If weather holds out, we'll be making some hay out there, so. Our city crews have been very busy between working on streets, working on various infrastructure, water mains, water mains and water mains, and leaks, yeah. And that's pretty much all I have on my report, so with that. Lenny, do you have anything this evening?
New Officer Eric Mitchell is working now. I mean, it's his first day doing pre-basis training. Next week, he'll be on the road with his field training officer. And Officer Dan McGill and Nathan Hunter, they're with the halfway marketing academy that's starting to meet.
Good deal. Kevin?
Nothing.
Don?
Pulling down the door when Jeremy's gone.
Yeah, Jeremy's on vacation this week. Kurt?
Near the heat.
Carrie?
Nothing.
Mr. Carbach?
Nothing.
Melissa?
No.
Okay, council members?
Wait, well, we need to have a discussion to help Phyllis out on budgeting.
Thank you for bringing that. If I don't write it down, I forget it, while, Lenny.
I was going to bring it up.
Thank you. Yeah, funding for the Arts Commission, some seed money, so to speak, that sort. And then, is that something we want to do annually, or is this just something we want to do this year to get them off the ground?
I think it needs to be done. My opinion is it needs to be done annually.
To show support.
Show support. I mean, we annually contribute in some way to the different art projects, so this would be keeping in line with that.
What are we committing funding wise to the arts?
Yeah.
I would have to check, you know, how much we're giving the Sculpture Committee we give to.
Do you, Phyllis, do you have any kind of ballpark of kind of, when you think about?
I think it's only Sculpture.
Sculpture tour.
I don't think.
It seems like we've done others, but.
North Adams Arts Council, no? Culture Connection.
Although in kind, we do help North Adams Arts Council.
By letting them use the.
We give them the building, or they pay rent and the utility fund, but other than that, yeah, we do do that.
I look at it, because this is somewhat, Commission has started to help take care of that facility that we're eventually going to have down there, so.
For rent.
Which will generate some income at some point.
Are we saying, by doing this, are we saying when the Sculpture Tour wants to get money, they need to go to the Arts Commission?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. We're not, we're funding arts, not, and they decide what programs are needed. But I do want to strongly encourage that we continue to give to the Sculpture Tour. Okay?
I'd say that that would be, I'd say in taking that into consideration, we fund this commission accordingly, that they, the Sculpture Tour can go talk to the commission. I think that's the ultimate goal of the commission, to fund the arts. So, we're not picking what art is more important than others, and they can go sell their picks.
Melissa, don't you think that was kind of one of the big concerns of the Sculpture Tour themselves, and as much as that they're feeling like they're losing their contact with City Council, and someone else is going to, they're going to have to report to someone else kind of thing? And we kind of assured them that, no, they, well, they'll be part of it. They'll have a member representing it. They'll have a member representing it, and we still pick members from council on that board.
And I think they still have the opportunity to come in and sell that board on what the Sculpture, I mean, it's not a hard sell for the Sculpture Tour to sell and how many people they bring, so when they go talk to that board, I'm just saying we fund the board with a substantial amount of funding to begin with, if possible, to.
Well, we got a part-time employee starting now. We got to cover till the end of the year at least.
And next year, I've instructed Phyllis that I would like to put her on as a part-time employee and not as a contract employee, so.
And that doesn't at all prohibit Sculpture or any other organization to come and share with City Council or make presentations to City Council. It's just financially.
Melissa, you see any issues with the Sculpture?
I think, Doctor, I think I want to see what Tyler says, but let's say that, you know, council wants to continue to fund Sculpture Tour at a very kind level. What if another art event pops up, and the Art Commission is now forced to decide, how do we divide up our money among events? Maybe this Sculpture Tour gets blessed, is that what you're getting at, Tyler?
Right, I'm kind of saying that, but I'm not saying that, in the same token, I don't know what amount is the right amount, but we get two thousand dollars to this Sculpture Tour. I think it needs to be far more than two thousand dollars that we, and the goal is this Art Commission in itself figures out a way to create an income or revenue base, generate some income, so that in theory, whatever we get is just seed money, that the goal of that is to create more money, I guess.
And in the, or in the ordinance that you just adopted, I think the, there are specific targeted goals of how the money should be spent. If you look at that, and I don't have it in front of me, but I think forty percent goes towards.
Yeah, it was.
If you have that, I can.
And not more than twenty percent for administrative costs.
Right, right. But, you know, so, you know, if you're going to have a part-time employee, and that's going to be funded out of here, if twenty percent, whatever twenty percent of that is, you need to have, you need to multiply that by five times.
Is it our intention to fund the employee from the seed money, though?
I think, I need to know that.
I think that she's, I visualized her just being a part-time employee of the City of Decatur, yes.
We contracted her for.
For the balance of this year, but with the intent of putting her in as an employee.
And that wouldn't be coming out of this.
So, you're saying that that would not be included in this, that they would be created as an employee?
So, where do you want her funded from?
I think in the goal of it, my understanding of this Art Commission was eventually to fund her payroll out of the Art Commission, but as far as next year goes, I think that's not feasible. Let's get it up and running, and then if we can, yeah, so she would be a city employee now, but if there's any way to gradually flow her into the Art Commission, I think that was kind of Cam's idea, what I got from him.
That was my understanding. Who do we want to, do we want to manage this person, or do we want the mayor to have to manage this additional person? I don't think so. I think that's what the Art Commission should do, but I believe what you're saying is correct. They need to see money, let's do that.
So, we need to let Phyllis know where the money comes from. Is it going to be a council fund? I mean, right now, I think the council still has ample funds this year, and you would likely have that again for next year.
I would prefer, I mean, I guess I'm under the impression that maybe she answers to the mayor. As of next year, we fund it out of council's account, but.
I mean, if you want to take it out of mayor's account, we can, I'll just have to bump, bump my budget.
Or, I mean, if it comes out of council, I don't.
I think three years into this, we'll know a lot more.
Yeah.
Right.
But I prefer that the city.
When I said that, Ken, I'm just saying, do you really need one more department to run? I would say no. I mean, if we need, until this committee gets up and running, or this board gets up and running, if there's definition or defining of obligations till the end of year, I would think, yeah, we do need some leadership role, and it probably should come from you, because we're not here in the office every day. But I don't think it's necessarily the mayor's responsibility to watch over an employee at an Arts Commission.
Are you saying, then, that the Arts Commission then should, she should answer to the Arts Commission?
That's why they have boards.
Ultimately, yes.
Yeah.
I think there's probably a transition period.
Correct.
You know, I think the first year or two, you're going to have to get things set up, and then you kind of pass the ball off to somebody else, the mayor.
But the whole goal of this thing is for us to fund it, let them come to us with decisions that they make, and manage their own ship, and gain their own funds, is my opinion. I mean, that's what I was under the impression of. We need to give them the startup and seed money. I don't care if it comes from council or the mayor's fund.
As she's been doing as a contract employee, her time slip comes to me, and I okay it. If you continue doing it that way, that's fine.
Yeah, but I just don't think you need, you know, I don't think you need to have the responsibility.
We still have, what do we, what number do we want to put into?
What is a reasonable number?
Twenty-twenty.
For budgeting for twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, what was her pay? Six grand or something like that for the, roughly, what I remember off the top of my head, from now till the end of the year or something?
I didn't think it was that.
I don't think it was that.
Yeah.
Do you remember, Mark?
No more than.
Four hundred a month or something, wasn't it?
No more than, what, five hours a week or something like that?
Well, no more than.
I think it was no more than fifty a month.
Fifty hours a month.
And it was twelve hours.
Twelve dollars.
Twelve dollars an hour.
Twelve dollars an hour.
Oh, well.
It is six.
Okay, I thought that ran it out.
But.
So, and then what do you normally throw at?
And then, if I could Medicare, it's probably another three grand.
Are you talking, I, I guess my suggestion, I, this is just a number, I don't know, maybe, I was thinking around ten thousand as a seed money, but I feel like council should probably take on the responsibility of that employee for next year, so that the ten thousand can fully be utilized as seed money, and then maybe if they get up and running and get some funding, then they can eventually pay for that.
I think, I think what you're going to see is if they get enough funding sources and they start building it up, then you can pass off the employee obligation to the commission, and they take over that responsibility.
That would be, to my eyes, the ultimate goal.
Are we talking about the utilities and all that stuff? Is that coming out of the arts side of here? Is that going to come out of that same fund?
I don't know how that would even set up over there.
Right. So, I think that's what we need to do.
There's a separate meter for electricity.
Yeah, and utilities.
And I think the utilities are all separated.
We're getting utilities.
Yeah.
All announced. But initially, that's what we need to pull under the city.
For now.
I think for now, yeah. I think.
Until we get an idea of what it's going to be.
Until you have a year or two under your belt, you're not going to know the full extent of your costs.
So, we probably ought to look at twenty grand. Basically, ninety-nine for the first, for the, for the work and the, or labor and.
They're going to have marketing. They're going to have, they're going to have marketing, they're going to have heating and air and phones and.
That's what I, I don't know.
Are you saying twenty thousand Craig, and you're paying, are you saying twenty thousand and they're paying for the utilities?
No, no, I'm saying we've got, I think we've got to encompass the whole thing. You have twenty. know, 20,000's not enough and we need to raise the bar a little bit.
Okay, so we're talking two different things.
All falls under the arts commission.
How much we want to put, give them a seed money and how much then in addition we want to put into the city's budget for the cost of operations.
Right. Okay, so we want to limit it to two different accounts?
Yeah.
Okay.
For, for now, until.
You're thinking like 20,000 to cover everything?
I don't know, how much the utilities are gonna be in that building.
We don't know what the utilities are gonna be doing yet.
Haven't built it.
Right. Well, can we first determine the seed money? Do we want to say 10,000?
I mean, I'd feel comfortable if we think that's enough, but.
We can always come back tomorrow.
Let me get this right, okay, so we're giving the art commission $10,000, like we do council and H E, is that how I'm supposed to budget it and I write a check to them and give it to them?
What, the non-reverting fund, it's gonna start off the.
Do you want to just run it through the budget and put her, is she, is she receiving checks from you, from the city, Phyllis, right now, this girl?
Yeah.
You want to continue with that?
Well, that's where it would be if she's gonna be a city employee.
Well, right now, she's contracted, so we just write her a check out of here, she's in here, and all these claims, but if we put her on the payroll, then she gets a paycheck and direct, a direct rate deposit in her, in her bank account.
I think, I think what you prob, what you're talking about doing, Phyllis, is what you just said, you, you write a check to them for the 10,000, that they use then for up to 40% for public art programs, up to 40% for public art projects, and up to 20% for administration or operating expenses, they're gonna have to buy supplies, they're gonna have to do marketing, things like that, then you guys in your budget are probably gonna have to cover the utilities down there and the employee costs for the first year or two, at that point, if they're at a point where they can start to assume that responsibility of oversight of the.
We can hand those over.
You're gonna hand that over and they fund it from there on.
Not knowing what the utilities are going to run us at this time, we need to cushion it, and we don't need to use it all, but we need to cushion it enough. I, I think the 10,000 for the arts commission is spot on, I think that's good, as far as the other, the other amount for.
Do you have to budget that in a fund, Phyllis, or does that come out of like the utility?
There'll come, there'll be a utility line and.
For her salary.
Salary line and.
Her benefit.
Yeah, and the, in the salary and hourly ordinance that's driving.
Salary ordinance for 2020.
Right, well, that's gonna be close.
What's the minimum, Kevin, 73 a month?
I'm talking about like.
A hundred and seventy, seventy, forty-four, seven dollars a month.
I'm talking more for like, uh, heat.
Electric coal and.
Yeah.
I have to look it up.
Well, it's gonna have to be a ballpark, I mean, it's not gonna be as much as this building, but I just curious how much this building runs.
We, we do not own that area, is that correct?
Or do we?
We don't own it, but.
That's what she said.
Yeah.
Where would the money go?
Into an account.
To their fund.
To an account here in. So into an account, establish some of the ordinance.
But that would still live here, right?
Yeah, Phyllis would, yeah.
Okay. Because it still has to get anything that the arts commission wants to buy, it still has to be approved by council.
You're not writing a check, you're just having it aside in a different fund, and then the city would still write out a check.
Well, I'll, initially, I'll write a check from another fund to pay for that art commission and it'll go to establish that fund.
But the arts commission will never gonna be.
They don't have their own check, though.
No, it's just like a department, just like the development committee.
You said write a check, I just.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Figure, okay.
It's just a show paper trail.
It's $20,000 too much to budget for the employee and utilities, I mean, if we don't use it, it goes back into the.
Right, it reverses back to the general.
That's what I was thinking, 2025 is a good number.
I think 20's a nice.
Go with 20, I was my, I would agree.
If you're a thousand dollars a month for utilities, that's 12,000, that's what your cost is, 8,000, because you're still gonna be turning in hours if like now.
Yep.
And are you still planning on this employee being at the same?
At the, the same amount of hours?
Yeah.
Yes. For now, yep. Okay, so what I'm hearing is for seed money for the arts commission itself to go into their fund, $10,000, and then into another account just for the city's budget for funding the employee and the overhead of operation, operating the building, utilities, et cetera, another 20,000 just to put into the budget for next year.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
I mean, and the goal would be that the art commission goes out and takes that 10,000 and increases it, maybe they go to the county and ask them to help with it, I mean, I'm not saying that's gonna be.
I like your think, I like your thinking.
That's what they need to do, not just take our 10,000 and spend it, but.
Well, and, and it gives them the seed money if they want to go after a grant where they can leverage it.
Right.
And get additional funds through that, I mean, it, it gives them that opportunity, so.
Do I have a motion, does that affect?
Some of them.
Second, a motion on a second, Barb and Phyllis, did you both get that down or I need to repeat it? You got it, Barb?
I think so, the 10-year commission, that 10,000 as seed money and budget funding for employee and utilities of 20,000.
Thank you, yep.
That is not a loan.
It's not a loan. All in favor, opposed? Thank you.
And one thing, going back to the comment or the conversation about the sculpture tour going to the commission as opposed to council for funding, there's nothing, there's nothing that prevents council members to go to that meeting with the sculpture tour to request that funding and as a show of your support, if that's what, if you feel strongly that that's something that should be supported, there's nothing to say you can't support them in that way.
True, and I feel like the sculpture tour can sell itself and I think they should have no problem.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure the city is still gonna be helping out with the in-kind service.
If you see anyone from the sculpture committee, reassure them of that, okay? I go to, I attend their meetings and they were, they're concerned that this could affect their funding long-term and.
Artists on the same page, everybody, you know, fuck.
Okay, anything else from council members tonight?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
If you weren't around this last weekend, we had downtown Decatur days, one of the most exciting days I've ever been to, it was yoga on the courthouse lawn on the, on the west side of the property, which was awesome, it started at 9:00 AM, uh, they had vendors, I believe Lenny Corral was down there, he was receiving people throwing baseballs at him about 1 o'clock till he broke the cage, he was in the dunk tank, Lenny, chief, chief Lenny Corral, all the vendors outside on the sidewalks, the whole downtown was buzzing, we had dancers that went on until about 11 o'clock, I think that was from 10 to 11, all little dancers on the street down there right in front of, on the west end of the plaza, and at 11 until 1 o'clock, or about 12:45, we had a wrestling brawl on the plaza, they'd set up a three-ring, wrestling ring and, and brawl out there, all the kids really love, there were several, several hundred people at that, and as I remember, ended right about 3 o'clock, people were very participant and very happy about that, also on this Thursday, we've got a concert with a guy named Seth, Seth Cook, he's a Nashville recording artist, if you haven't seen him, you can go on YouTube video under Seth Cook, you can check out our chamber website, if possible, please share that, that'll happen 7 to 9 on Thursday evening, we'll have a regular food vendors and the whole, whole deal, on Sunday afternoon, reminder, from 4 until 6, we'll still have food vendors, I think they'll probably set up around 2, we've got John King, who's another Nashville recording off, uh, artist that will be on the plaza, and that will be on Sunday, which is a little out, it's a little strange right now, from 4 till 6, and then we'll resume with Thursday after, or evening concerts after that, until Labor Day, and then we'll go back to Sunday afternoons through September, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Craig, anything else? Phyllis?
Okay, I'm working on 2020 budget, um, this Thursday, not this Thursday, next Thursday, I will meet with DLGF to review our budgets and review the revenue estimates, and then by the end of this month, they'll provide me with the tax capped amounts and SS value, and then so August 6, hopefully I'll have all the budgets prepared formally, so council can review those, so with Ann's presentation, she has a lot of projects in here, now I need council to decide where you want me to put the budget for 2020, because I'll need to know that to get the budget completed, what you want to. What's the priority? I know Hannah Nutman's.
Oh, you mean what project?
Yeah, I have to put in, how much do you want to put in for 2020? Because I know the Hannah Nutman project alone is quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
That we want to budget, so if you just want to do Hannah Nutman for next year, we can do that.
Well, for starters, we have to have 50 for facades, we gotta keep that going. Correct, everyone?
You already committed 50,000, this is year four.
Oh, so we still have one more year?
So one more year.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about that yet.
Well, I mean, is it, oh, you've already got budgeting for five years.
Yeah, I do.
But, you know, so this, but this would start in 2021, correct?
No, 2020.
The, this project, the five-year thing.
Begins 2020.
2020.
Yeah, the first year of the initial five-year investment plan started in 15, so.
And I think I have a copy of that.
19 is the last of the five years.
How is the facade program funded for next year?
It's not really, I couldn't, it's not budget, it's a, it's a, I used to get money for that.
We committed to that, we committed to this for five years, but we committed to five years of facade grant, and she's saying we're at year four, so we're already pre-committed, which is going very well.
Oh, so you're saying that that's, the facade program started later?
It, yeah.
It didn't start 15, 2015.
It didn't, it wasn't part of the five-year.
Just like, and there's the 15th Street corridor and they're not ready to start there.
Phyllis, if we, if we, if we, if we go fully with Hannah Nutman next year, will you be able to find money elsewhere in the budget to put towards Second Street, Streetscapes for next year? Because that is a continual.
I know redevelopment has already, for sure, I think, didn't they put that in their budget, I'll have to look at the budget again, but I think they committed.
They did, yeah.
If that's where you want, I mean, I just need some direction, because we've got a lot of projects going in.
They committed so much towards that, but it wouldn't cover the.
No, it wouldn't cover it all.
No.
I mean, you can look down this list and there's more than two and a half million dollar stuff on here, actually, so, uh, it's a pick and choose kind of thing, yeah.
To be all done in one year.
Now, the Hannah Nutman project, we said, we got enough to get us to May 2020, but we got parking lots that we want to pave, which is roughly 400,000, uh, what we got this year does not pave the parking lots, they're gravel parking lots next year, so if, and, and does not light the fields, so, I mean, there's nearly two more million dollars down the road that we need to put into Hannah Nutman after this year.
Well, this, this, next five years, for this next year, does all of that have, is what the, 200, what would it be?
200 million.
200, yeah, but for the first year, 500,000, does that all have to be actually earmarked, attached to a project?
I want it to be, so I don't spend on something else.
Well, I mean, it just wouldn't be spent until we, I mean, I, I feel really.
Well, you don't have to spend 500,000, but we should put it in the budget, so it's available.
Exactly, but to attach total 500,000 to projects.
That we're still fundraising for.
That, yeah, but I get it, unless I misunderstood what you were asking.
Well, what you guys just approved tonight was to do 2.5 million over five years.
Correct.
If you want to get that done, you have to tell me, because I have to fit it in the budget, where that money's coming from.
If they, if they say, if they say Hannah Nutman and Streetscapes, you can earmark it.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean we have to spend it all there though, right?
No. For, for instance, it's like this year, this is how I did it, common council, council for Second Street project, 40,000 came out of, Riverboat Fund, Second Street Improvement Project, Rainy Day Fund, Second Street Loft, um, CCD Fund, market, marketing campaign, 20,000, and did it with the Hannah Nutman, 500,000, we committed 820,000 this year for all those projects, although, you know, I don't, I know some may not get completed this year.
Well, that money.
I know the Hannah Nutman will, but then I'll just go ahead and re-budget more money for that 2020.
Right.
Whatever projects you want me, I, I just need some guidance and support.
These were things that were from the two and a half million, so any of this money we don't.
This from Greater Decatur, you guys.
Any of this that doesn't get spent rolls into the next, is what you're saying?
It just gets.
No, it doesn't, I have to re.
She has to re-budget it.
Okay.
Because it's coming from different tax revenues.
Right.
Like CCD is, it's got its own tax rate, um, common council is from property tax, Riverboat is from Riverboat revenue, so they're all, they're all different.
Ann said a reverting fund, but in essence, there is no reverting fund, it is Phyllis budgeting strategically from different funds to.
Exactly.
Accomplish.
Either of those.
Goals.
Right, so, so the bottom line is, if you guys anticipate that you're gonna do 500,000 dollars worth of projects, then Phyllis needs to just budget for 500,000 and you can earmark which projects she's gonna fund with that 500,000.
Right, but I don't feel in a position tonight that I can earmark each one.
No, I'm not saying you would.
But that's what I thought she was asking, yeah, I think she wants it earmarked.
I would like to have it that way, so I know what you're wanting.
We've already pre-committed to.
I mean, you've already committed to.
Facade grant.
You started the Hannah Nutman project, to me, I think we need to see that through, that's my opinion.
We pre-committed to Hannah Nutman, we pre-committed.
Before we started on, I don't know what you had here.
And we pre-committed to. This is year one of Second Street, then it was year two, year three to get us to the.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have Second Street, or Streetscape improvements that I think Jeremy is looking to do this year, or next year, as he moves down towards five points.
Five points.
Yeah, so you're.
We committed to that schedule.
I would, I mean, in my opinion, I think the top three on this list, the facade program, well, the Second Street, Streets, I guess it's not the top three, but Second Street, Streetscapes and Hannah Nutman, probably all need to be budgeted, in my opinion, because the projects have to be finished, they're already started, we're already into them and they have to be done before we start something else.
Well, I would agree with that.
So I guess if you can worry it out, let earmark.
And Phyllis, you said you already had 50,000 budgeted for facade?
But not.
Yeah, I will budget that, that's not really part of the five-year plan.
So for next year, you're gonna do Streetscapes and Hannah Nutman.
Yeah, that's how I feel, yeah, that'd be.
So you're, if Streetscapes, what was it this year?
Now, let's run, bring one more of that thing up, I don't know how deep and detailed, but we're gonna have one campus school system, we don't have sidewalks going after that. I'm concerned about that, guys, I really am, I don't know what it was gonna cost, but I think we better cover our, uh.
Do you wanna work this?
Well, also, something else we had to do before the end of the year is, we have to make a two-year seed plan and how we're using those money for 2020 and 2021, so you So you need to think about that also.
Well, the other thing is.
That doesn't have to be done before my budget meeting, but that does need to be done.
The, the way I understood, and I think the way it was done this last five years was, that you committed a minimum of five hundred thousand, but you weren't locked into five hundred thousand only. You know, in the past, we didn't spend it the first year, so we had additional funds that we could carry over to the next. And if we had seven hundred thousand, we could do that. You know, the flip side of it is, if you feel that you need to do sidewalks, Streetscapes and Hannah Nutman, if we have the means to do more than five hundred the first year, just reduces what's gonna be available in the remaining four. So that's up to you guys to decide how you wanna do it, and Phyllis then, you know, if, if council says they wanna fund seven hundred fifty thousand, do we have the means to do that?
Does anyone here recall?
Yeah, right, because once I calculate all the budget, I'll let you know where the money is.
Yeah, you could say.
Yeah, we can't do that much. Or we can't.
What else would be the change?
I mean, I'd say.
Do you recall what, this one block I hear Streetscape is running?
That's what I was thinking, or not quite that.
Well, what was two and a half?
Hundred and ninety.
Under way.
I know, I do, redevelopment, budgeted some for.
Which if we do the block to the south, and that may not be that much because of the courthouse.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
It's gonna cost eighty to get it out the ground. Yeah. Those are what's been mentioned so far.
So if you're talking, what are you talking about sidewalks? How much are you talking, you think you need for that?
We talking along the road street?
Second.
No.
No, I was talking about to get to the high school where people, you know, from city limits, I'm, I don't know, that's what I'd ask.
I think Jeremy has a plan for Og Street. He's gonna repay Og Street, he's gonna make it a little, a tad wider, Og Street's the one that comes out of Stratton and goes over to the high school.
Okay.
That floods. And when he repaves it, I believe what he told me was he was gonna make it, Don, can you maybe help me here, make it a little wider and he said he was gonna actually stripe it so that there'd be like a walking path. It's not gonna be a, a concrete sidewalk, it'll be a paved pathway for walking on. Does that sound right?
Yeah. I don't remember seeing any specific things.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I got that one, yeah. Well, I got a list of where we spent it, but I don't remember us getting to you.
Ken?
Maybe we.
How much are you anticipating goes towards Hannah Nutman?
Well, I believe that regardless of what we put in earmark for Hannah Nutman, we're probably gonna have to do another reappropriation of some funds for Hannah Nutman, if we're gonna keep the ball rolling there.
So, you said, are, are you doing more than the paving of the parking lots?
Yeah, there's a lot more, uh, there's gonna be the trails around the facility, pavilion, playgrounds.
And those are, we're designing, or we wanna do that in twenty twenty?
It was likely won't get done for this, in what we have coming up for this year.
Right. So if you're, if, if you need to get those done in twenty twenty, we're looking, you said around four hundred thousand to pave the parking? Do we know what the, the trails you're talking about?
Jeremy was here, maybe it could get you that figure, but.
Well, you know, it seems.
And that's another thing that, you know, Melissa and Jeremy and I went down and talked about Bronson at DNR, hope, hopeful of maybe getting some grant funding for that.
That's gonna need that.
Yep, we're gonna have that money to match it.
It's already.
But you probably.
Seven fifty.
I, I would say, you probably oughta plan on budgeting seven fifty or eight hundred thousand, because you're talking money you're gonna have to put into Northwest, you're talking about Hannah Nutman, you're talking about Streetscapes, and possibly sidewalks.
Yeah, that one says a hundred K on the sidewalks on that proposal right there.
Okay, so, you know, if you have the ability, and Phyllis, you're gonna have to.
The hundred is, I think was over five years, I think.
Oh, I thought, I said per year.
Is it per year?
Yeah.
Per year.
Okay.
So, so if you, if you guys wanted to budget eight hundred towards, eight hundred thousand towards capital projects in two thousand twenty, as long as Phyllis says you can, she can find funds that you have to work with to do that and cover the rest of the operating budget, you can do that, that just reduces what's gonna be available in the later years for other capital projects, if you're capping five years at two and a half million.
Right.
But if, if there is a priority for these projects to be done in twenty twenty, then you have the ability to, to fund that, as long as we have the means to, to cover that.
Yeah. So we do, I mean, we've already got these few that we've committed to, Hannah Nutman, Second Streetscapes, and we know we wanna do some sidewalk improvements, and as you said.
To Northwest?